Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Here.
Here.
I'm thinking positively.
We knew what you meant. Weaver?
Here.
Eusefion?
I'm thinking. Here.
Mayor Najarian?
Here.
Thank you.
And for the Housing Authority.
Authority members, Draymond?
Here.
Mincy?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Prozian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Eusefion?
Here.
Chairman Weaver?
Here. Let me have your report, please.
Agenda for the April 8, 2008 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, April 3, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Thank you, and we have the first item. One is Director of Community Development and Housing regarding proposed annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Emergency Shelter Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnership Act, home programs for fiscal year 2008, 2009. At one A is a council resolution certifying and adopting a certain negative declaration has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. At one B is a council motion approving the fiscal year 2008, 2009, CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan subject to amendments by the council in authorizing submission of the plan to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. At C is authority motion approving the fiscal year 2008, 2009, CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan subject to amendments by the council. And at D is a council motion approving a revised financial audit policy for sub recipients of CDBG funds.
Thank you. Mr. Starber?
Yes, I'll go to Madeline Blake for staff department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and members of the housing authority. You have before you today for consideration the annual action plan for submittal to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the plans for the use of community development block grant, ESG, and home funds totaling just about $5.8 million. The primary program here for consideration is a community development block grant program. And that planning process starts early in the fall. As you recall, in November, a proposed preliminary funding plan was brought to you for consideration. An RFP was issued, proposals were received. And generally speaking, the recommendations that you have before you today are the recommendations of the CDBG Advisory Committee, five members who are appointed by you to consider the funding proposals. When you look out in this audience, these are the social service providers in the city of Glendale. The need is great, this is really a thankless job, it's a very difficult job. All of the members of the CDBG Advisory Committee are here today. And I would like to, before we make our presentation, to ask the Chair of the Advisory Committee, Mr. Chang Lee, to say a few words because he will provide the context in which these recommendations were made. Ultimately, this is a decision by the city council. But you have appointed the Advisory Committee, and Mr. Chang will provide some introductory comments before Jess goes through the recommendations with regards to the context in which they made these recommendations.
Good afternoon, Housing Authority members and council members. I'd like to first say that I am honored and privileged to be a member of the committee, the CDBG Commission. And like any other years, this year it was no different. It was very challenging, and it was a difficult process because we have funding, limited funding, and we have agencies who is applying for this funding. You know, we're in greater numbers this year. We had actually six new applicants that apply for the funding here. So obviously, you know, this was no easy task for us. But as you have interested us and appointed us in this position to review these proposals, we have done that. We looked at the interview process. We also looked at the matrix that was developed by one of our commissioners. And we looked at the functions of the agencies. And considering all these factors, we believe that we came up with the adequate recommendation before you here. As I mentioned, that this is no easy task. But, you know, we've done our due process to process this recommendation. And we'd like you to strongly consider our recommendation today. And following me is Commissioner Olivares and Commissioner Mirian, who will speak on behalf of our decision here or recommendation that we made.
Good afternoon, council members and Housing Authority members. I want to follow up on our Chair's words and want to say thank you for still allowing me to be part of this commission. It's something that is very dear to my heart. I've been on this about 14 years, and so we don't take this very lightly. But I wanted to touch on a couple of specific things that occurred this year. And one is the, we have a very difficult task, and there are a lot of needs in this community, particularly in the south of Glendale. When I first came to Glendale, I lived in the south of Glendale. I lived on Maple Street for a number of years. And so we decided to take a creative approach to some of the recommendations that you're going to see later on today. One is related to the graffiti program, one is related to the capital programs, and related to a pool project. And I know Zari is going to follow me, and he'll touch a little bit more in detail on this. But our hope is that you consider what we have to say, and there was a logic behind the presentation you're going to hear from staff. It did not come across in the report because it has nothing to do with the conversations we had behind the decision making. So we're all here. When you do consider those, I would hope that if you have any questions, bring us back up, and we'll give you a little bit more detail on this. And so I'm going to let Zari come up and say a few words also.
Council members, Housing Authority, my name is Zari Mirian. I'm a commissioner on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. First of all, I want to echo my colleague's sentiments. I want to thank you for the opportunity and the honor to serve on this committee. It's been an experience that has opened my eyes to the extent of the need for social programming and capital programming in the city of Glendale, something that I didn't quite fully understand before I began. I want to address a couple of the issues. First of all, to clarify what we do, not just for yourselves, but for the public. We spend dozens, if not hundreds, of hours of our own time looking through, and it's a box that was about this big, of funding request proposals, or requests for funding proposals. And we go through each of these. Attached to all of these is an audit, a financial audit. We look at data that's provided to us by staff. And before I go on, I want to thank the staff for their work because without them, we wouldn't get a full picture of the amount of work that these agencies put in to preparing, you know, and preparing to serve the members of our community. So we go through that, we conduct site visits, and we basically use all of these tools at our disposal in order to come to an advisement for all of you. So this year, the process was very similar to last year. There were a couple of things that we did differently. First, I'll mention the graffiti program. All of us on the committee understand the history and understand the purpose of the Community Development Block Grant Fund. We understand the importance of these funds because they're one of the only federal grants that are filtered down to the city level in the United States. We understand that they were originally intended to combat, you know, blight in cities. And graffiti is definitely blight. But there were a couple of issues, and this goes to the process of how we make our determinations. One was during that process, every single agency or organization that has a proposal comes before us and gives us a summary of what their program is going to do, how they're going to spend the funds, and we ask them questions regarding those proposals. The graffiti program was a unique program in that it has been funded for many years by the CDBG. But during our determinations, we discovered that the, according to the information that we received, the elimination of those funds from the CDBG side, which is only a percentage, a small percentage of the total budget for the graffiti removal program, would not actually impact the removal of graffiti from the city, but the time in which it would be removed. Now, you know, we understand that, you know, removing graffiti in a timely manner is important, but given the things that Mr. Lee and Mr. Olivares mentioned about how many programs applied versus the money available, we felt that this was a cut that was necessary in order to address other needs in the city. The second aspect was the capital projects. Now, the capital projects came before us, and obviously there were, you know, nearly $1.5 million in pre-designated projects on the capital side. Again, during our question-answer-and-question session, we found out that the information that was provided to us told us that, you know, removing a portion of the pre-designated funds from specific projects would not affect the eventual completion date of those projects. Given that information, we decided to put in our proposal to meet the projects that would be completed this year and that needed the money for the upcoming fiscal year. I want to remind you all that last year's process went very well, and I want you to remember some of the comments that you made. Nothing was different this year. And again, I want to thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to serve. Please ask us questions. We're here at your pleasure, and we want to answer these questions for you. And any questions that you may have, we will be willing to answer to the best of our ability. And I respectfully ask for your support in endorsing our recommended funding proposals, and I want to thank my fellow committee members for making the process an enjoyable one and an educational one. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weaver?
I have a general question for whoever wants to answer it. This year, you funded three new projects. Without getting into detail each one, what made you feel was important to put some new projects in this year at the expense of others a little?
Yeah, all six projects, we felt that was a good project, good programs for the community. But three programs that we did not fund lacked some of the guidance and some of the, meeting the requirements of the city to get funded. So we instructed them to get maybe more help and guidance in terms of preparing to, you know, to put the funding proposal together for next year. And so it was not that because of the program was inadequate, this program was excellent, it's just that their preparedness was inadequate, and we instructed them.
What about the ones you did fund?
Yeah, those were...
What caused you to do it?
Well, those three programs were, as, you know, like any other program, it was a social program that was needed for the community and for the city of Glendale.
Were you looking at a balance because others suffered took a cut in order to be funded? So they're... Mr. Olivares?
I think that's a very good question, I think, because CDBG over the years has had a philosophy of helping new programs come on board. You're going to hear today from a program that's been around a long time, has had a lot of support from CDBG over the years, naturally still are unhappy with our recommendations because people keep saying we cut funds. We're not really cutting funds. Every year is a new round. Every year, new programs have the ability to come in and compete for monies. And this year, we felt like some of the smaller programs are viable ones and may get to be very good programs down the line, five, six years from now.
And Councilman Weaver, just to address the specific question about the new programs and to elaborate on Mr. Lee's comments, what's important for us is to see necessity in the community, and all of these programs, we know, are necessary. But documented necessity is very important to us. When Mr. Lee speaks of preparation, he doesn't mean just a matter of who's up there presenting. It's a matter of the documents that show what the program is going to do, who it's going to serve, how much money it's going to cost, and break that down into pieces. And these three new programs demonstrated that very well, and we felt that those programs needed to be funded.
Thank you.
Mr. Draymond?
I have a question for Committee Member Mirian. It's not necessarily directed at you, but you referenced it, so I'll toss it to you.
Sure.
You can perhaps toss it to whom. About the graffiti issue, which is a big issue to me...
Yes, sir.
The funds that you were talking about that deal, you characterize as dealing more with the time schedule more than the removal itself.
Those weren't my words, Councilmember Draymond?
That's, I think, where I'm headed.
Okay.
Whose words were they? Who did you consult with on this?
It was the person who was making the presentation. Was that Mr. Angle? Mr. Sam Angle? Basically, we wanted to be very clear, and I wanted to be very clear. In their funding proposal packet, I saw those, what was written out, that normally, in the city, if they got full funding from the CDBG, graffiti would be removed in a period of usually less than 24 hours, sometimes up to 36 or 48. I'm not sure about the exact numbers because I don't have that in front of me. And that if those funds, the $35,000 from the CDBG weren't provided, that it would extend that, I think it was to five days. But again, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what the timeline was. But it was a matter of maybe a few days in the actual removal. That prompted me to ask the question of whether or not it would actually impact the number of square feet of graffiti that would be removed. And the answer was no, it would be the time in which that graffiti would be removed. So I hope that answers your question and I...
Well, it does, and it does, and it answers the question, I mean, it answers the question I asked of you, for sure. Still leaves a big question mark in my mind, perhaps, for Mr. Angle, but as to how you calculate that. So does that mean that if we had funded it to the extent of $70,000, we would have it cleaned up twice as fast? I'm not quite getting how they break that down into just, just the number of hours that $35,000 relates to X number of hours. Beyond that, I'm just not convinced at this point that a five-day window is an acceptable window because for businesses and other areas that are impacted, the longer that graffiti is, I mean, even having it there a short period of time has a very detrimental effect, not to mention the fact that we also find businesses if they don't remove that graffiti within a certain, very limited window of time.
Mr. Starber?
I was just going to just link Mr. Engels in the audience. Maybe when you get to this item, he can come up and explain. Like Mr. Draymond, my impression's always been in my years in local government, and there's always been graffiti, that removing it in the timeframe within you remove it has a big impact on your ability to keep up with it and whether more is generated. But I too don't quite understand the relationship on this funding. I will point out that based on the numbers that Madeline just gave me, this amount of funding is about 21% of the total budget. So it was reflected as a small proportion, I guess, if you think 21% is small, it's small, but it's about a fifth of the total funding. Again, Mr. Engels in the audience, when you get to this item, you may want to call on him and have him explain his comments before the committee.
Okay. Do you have a, is there a PowerPoint or anything that you have?
Mr. Mayor, we have, we're going to not do the PowerPoint. We're going to go directly to the recommendations and put the recommendations up. We have those. So that Jess can go through those, and then the council can... I think you have enough background. We gave the background in November and between the committee and myself, unless you'd like to see the PowerPoint.
My only, my only concern is that I don't think we have enough time today to hear from everyone from the public, even if I limit them to two minutes, to go through all the recommendations, to have us deliberate and ask questions and do what we decide to do. So my priority today would be to have everyone who's come to speak and to address a particular program to be able to do so. I don't want to carry them over until, to another meeting if we're not able to finish tonight. So how quickly could Mr. Duran go through the base recommendations?
He can go, he can go through it fairly quickly, and if you need to continue the item itself over to next week to do your deliberations, that wouldn't necessarily impact our...
Okay. So let's, why don't we have Mr. Duran? And then I do want to have the, give the public a chance. We've taken time off today, their schedules, work, family, et cetera, to at least address this, and our deliberations would come towards the end.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Glendale City Council, Chairman Weaver, members of the Glendale Housing Authority, you are all now very familiar with the process. We've been through this with, with you as a body for a couple of years now, so we don't have to go through the entire presentation. I would like to preface by reminding you that we did have a joint meeting last week, at which time we discussed the use of the CDBG administration funds, and we, staff was directed to return with a matrix or a list of suggestions for possibly, for possible administrative efficiencies. So we still plan to do that. We plan to work on that. It's going to take a lot of thought, and so we will return with that. And if, if and when you're ready to give specific direction on the administration funds, we can easily go back and amend the annual plan that we're asking you to approve today. So very quickly, we talked about the purpose of the meeting, the funding that's available. It's $5.7 million comprised of Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Shelter Grant, and the home program. You met three of the committee members. I also want to mention that Alec Bagdassarian is one of our committee members, as is Mr. Gary Cornell, who is the Vice Chair of the committee. One of the responsibilities of the Advisory Committee is also to provide input on any program requirements. We do have a financial audit policy that the committee reviewed as a result of complaints or feedback we got from the agencies, which, which we can probably address next week if we need to, so we don't need to get into that. In terms of, obviously, what we're all here for is to review the funding recommendations themselves, and the most controversial ones would be the social services. So as you can see up on the screen are the recommendations for the public social service programs, and you have a number of speakers here today to speak to those. You also have a copy of that, those recommendations represented by page 12 in your packet. And so, you know, we don't have to go through all of them. We included a column which will show you the percent difference between what's being recommended and what they're currently receiving. So for example, on page 12, the first project listed is the Club Jam After-School Program. They currently receive $20,000. They were recommended for $38,000, which would represent a 175% increase against their current funding. So, so again, we don't have to go through that. I know you're anxious to hear from the public, so unless you have any questions, I will, I'll come back after, after you hear from the public.
Okay. Let's, let's go to the public and see where we go from here.
175% is wrong, no? 75%. 100% of $20,000 would be $40,000. No? What I have in here says 75. Is this wrong, or is that wrong?
It's, it's a different way of saying the same thing.
100 plus 75%.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. We also have a spreadsheet, so we are available and prepared to, to make some revisions, and then it's, it's got a formula so it'll calculate whether we're balanced at the bottom if you're ready.
Thank you. First speaker is, and I'm, again, folks, because of the large number of speakers, I'm going to request that you keep it to two minutes. Natalie Camora? And please tell us right off the bat what organization that you represent, so we can look it up and see what sort of funding you have.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the Housing Authority, Chairman. My name's Natalie Profont Camora, and I'm the Executive Director of Pathachieve Glendale. We have two projects that we submitted for funding, and both of them are critical in the front line of service delivery for homeless people in the city of Glendale. I just wanted to speak briefly about both the requests. One is that the CDBG request that we submitted was for $30,000, and the committee recommended $25,000. Knowing that this is a very competitive process and that there are many competing needs, I did not protest the $5,000 cut to our request. But I need to inform you and make sure you understand that we really simply cannot accommodate any more than that. This money leverages $4 for every dollar that the city puts in in block grant money from a supportive housing grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It leverages services out of our access center and is a critical, important component to ensuring that outreach services continue for the homeless people that you see on the streets. Already, six months into this program year, we are more than 50% ahead of our program goal, serving over 200 people from the community. I also want to point out that when we submitted our emergency shelter grant application, we operate a 40-bed emergency housing program at Fernando Court. As you know, in the fall, you supported an application to convert that facility for first step housing. So at the time that I wrote this application, I did not know whether we would in fact be getting that funding to change and convert to a different program, or whether we would need this funding for emergency housing. And I'm here to tell you today that we will not be moving forward with first step. That proposal is not going to move forward at the county level at this time. And so come July 1st, we do need housing, emergency housing funding to continue the operations of emergency shelter programs. Am I two minutes up? So that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Herbert Milano?
Which one is that, ESG?
Followed by Pam Ellis.
Members of the City Council, Housing Authority, my name is Herbert Milano. I'm here to address the overall funding process. This money is, are monies that come from the federal government, not from Glendale funds. And today, when you look at all of these worthy groups, they're out here fighting, what I think, and what I say is, fighting for the crumbs. With a city of a budget overall of $700 million overall, we're now trying to scrape around and figure out how we paid one program against the other completely and unnecessarily. For too long, the city of Glendale has been shortchanging those organizations and the needs of Southern Glendale. You know, while we wait for the federal government to come to the rescue and fund a pool, or fund this, or fund the other, why can't the city find out of its own general fund these programs and add another $1 million so that there is more competing interest with regard to these needs? Because I'm sure that this is just the very, very minimum. Some of these programs did not even get funding, and they're very, very much worthwhile. When I looked at how the city spends its money, and I prepared this list that many here in the audience have, and you all have, I took up the top 45 employees who got the most increases in the city of Glendale last year alone. We got increments of $50,000, $52,000, $40,000. Overall, if we just take 45 employees that obtained that incredible increase, over $1.2 million, just by manipulating the overtime. If you were to cut just by 50% the abuse on overtime, the city would have sufficient money to fund all of these groups and then some. But it requires that you change the focus so that the city will find out of its general fund the incredible and fund the incredible and effective needs that these particular organizations provide. And I hope you move in that direction. Thank you.
Pam Ellis, followed by Stephen Abramyan.
Thank you, I'm, my name is Pam Ellis, I'm representing the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale, City Council, members of the Housing Authority. Our committee is an advisory group to the City Council, as you know, and of that $165,000 a year which Glendale spends on graffiti removal, we raised 20,000 of it through our fundraising efforts. The timing of graffiti removal is key. It's been identified in, in many studies to be really the tipping point in terms of whether a community is viewed as a safe community, whether crime is committed or not. The 24-hour standard that we've established here in Glendale really is one that we don't want to change. If, if the, the council does not fund this graffiti removal at the level that we need, you know, for, for actually paying the bills, I guess we'll have to go out and sell more candy bars and have more fundraisers, because we really won't lower our standard. We're all very proud of Glendale, as I know you are, and we want to see it continue to be a safe city to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Abramyan, followed by Bobken Badalian.
Good afternoon, guests, members of the City Council, city staff, Arnold Mayor Najarian. My name is Stephen Abramyan, I'm an executive board member of Hask Armenian American Community Center. I've come to you to ask you to reconsider our advisory, the advisory board decision on funding request by me and Hask. We had made a three-pronged approach, and this is what we had intended to do with our Media for Youth program. One was to provide an annual training program for at-risk youth, to give them a training in the television industry, to provide them at one-year-end certification and enough equivalency of education to be able to go and be competent in finding employment in the industry. By the way, it happens to be one of the largest employers in the city of Glendale, and the largest landowner in the city of Glendale, that industry. Secondly, to provide assistance to these, to the students and at-risk students and their parents to become better members of society, so as that they can become a lot, better law-abiding citizens of the Jewel City. And thirdly, and lastly, it was to provide programming, to provide academic and touring program and mentoring program, so that they will be able to do better in schooling. Given the cuts in education, I don't think that that would be a bad idea. Yes, the numbers were small, we are asking to provide a small amount of students with this assistance, but we're intending to make the program grow and provide better services for those who come to us. Lastly, we were asked, in the process of the, the selection process, and the, in the interviews and all those which were referred to by the advisory board, it was, it was made clear to us that we would, those in the advisory board would come and at least visit the facility. We made the offer at the time that they're always welcome, as others are welcome to our facility. We have yet to see any of them in our facility. All these programs do deserve merit. Ours wasn't accepted. Whether it was through use of national equilibra or some other equivalencies or methodology, that, let that be up to them. However, we ask you to please reconsider and find us worthy of some consideration. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your times.
Mr. Quintero, I just have a couple of quick questions. So the advisory committee did not visit your...
No, no sir.
And at your facility, you have a production studio?
Indeed, we have, and we have had one since beginning of this year. We have done production in the last two and a half years. As of this year, we have the facility in-house, and I'm glad to report that it's expanding, and we're about to receive new equipment perhaps by next week.
And you're located in the city?
At 1905 Victory Boulevard, Suite 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobken Badalian, followed by Arus Kazarian.
Hey, councilmen, dear mayor, my speech is, I will show this DVD, a few minutes. Thank you.
Okay, at the two minutes, when, when two minutes elapses, I'm going to call the next speaker. If he agrees to the DVD, that's his time. I see there's several of them lined up, so. I'm sorry.
Does he represent?
Please tell us what organization you're with, Mr. Badalian.
I'm Bobken Badalian, Armenian American Community Center.
That's Hask.
Hask, yes.
Yes, Ara Najarianem, yevyes hoshem kidek glav. Frank Quintero, Glendale City Councilman, shadu rafem, or asser yorg yergort kam yagne, usamte, arans kitnalu, dasht yergort gela, or jamanaga chap shudgansni, shad gar evo, kordganek tuk, vor mer hamainki lur dak, yev patadrek as polor tishvar gyanke vor mek mechenek, as hamainke tishvar che, shad orenk nerunen, shad... There are many things that, that we have to know, yev tsers tsarakir shad gar evo, shad u rafem, usamte, vor shad anak tsers jamera, tsers tsarakir nerera, vor deriag bahek mer polor hamainke. Congratulations, we're very happy to be here, and I would like to turn it over to my friend and colleague Frank Quintero.
My Armenian is almost as good as his, but, but I'll speak English. It is a pleasure to be here and an honor to be here with Ara, my good friend, and so many friends here from the organization. And I'm looking forward to working together to make this organization better next year, and the year after, and in the years to come. We have a lot of work to do, but I know I call this organization the organization of Armenian intellectuals, and I think that's true. I think that the, the brain power in this organization is going to cause it to be one of the leading organizations, and Glendale is going to do wonderful things for the whole community. So congratulations, and then we're going to see them on Tuesday, where Ara will present this plaque from the City Council to the officers of the organization.
Yes, Mr. Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. Abramyan, representing Hask. I'm very glad you could come before us to counsel this evening, and of course, we had a request from Mr. Quintero. Okay, the next speaker is Abraham Dermenjan. That's it, gentlemen, I'm inviting you to my Christmas party. You make it a holiday. Mr., is Mr. Dermenjan ready to speak? Or was he gonna? I'm sorry. Arus Kazarian? Okay, I'm sorry, I passed you up.
Hello, my name is Arus Kazarian, I'm from Hask, they're members of the City Council and youth, Your Honor, Mr. Najarian. I'm here to first and foremost thank you for giving us the opportunity to reconsider the decision of the...
And I am about to attend the USC Film and Sports of 2008. I am a board member of Hask Armenian Community Center, and I have participated actively since day one. I have long been a resident of the United States of America and witnessed the changes and challenges our community has faced. Even though the Glendale community has many other organizations that are there for helping the community in different aspects, but Hask is different. Our organization is trying to reach out to the at-risk youth through the media, which is today's modern means of communication. Our TV program of Hamain has brought to our attention that the majority of our listeners are in the need of professionalism and intellectualism, which is lacking today's, in, in media. I have a daughter who is involved in the media industry, and have seen the benefits that can be achieved through this means. As much as activities such as sport and music are important to the youth, I believe that grants put toward the involvement of media in the lives of our younger community will be highly beneficial as well. Being a mother of 20 years and having a musical background, I see a lot of talented children who much like seed, when not nurtured properly, do not blossom. We as an adults need to be able to recognize and give the right nutrition to those who are at need of right nutrition. I agree that the playing basketball and spending time on other activities can also be help, but look at the kids who find no interest, or less interest in those areas that are available today. They are forced to express their feeling in other ways to get attention. Media and film school, okay, I think we need to reevaluate today's generation needs and look at it closely to fulfill the needs which can be provided today's demand.
Thank you very much. Abraham Dermenjan, followed by Armin Zadikyan.
I'm representing Hask, from Hask, please play the DVD.
Two years in its media division, Hamain, I have helped with many facets of the weekly programming, and I look forward to starting this new and exciting program called Media for Youth. I believe firmly that this will have a very positive impact on the youth. This is a program which will help teens get assistance with schooling, life issues, and train in the expansive television industry, which I noted that I have been a part of. I look forward to working with at-risk teens to find their niche in this wonderful industry, with many exciting opportunities. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and ask the City Council and Mayor Najarian to reconsider the decision of the CDBG Advisory Board, and let this project be funded so that we can make this happen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Artis Akani, I go to Tomo School in Glendale. I heard about the Media Youth Program on television. It sounds interesting to me, since I like computers and movies. The best part is that I live on the next block to the studio. What makes this special to me is that I can get help with my schooling and get to know more about films and television. I hope that you will give the program another chance to, so that young people like me can really benefit a lot from this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Corin, and I live on Irving Avenue in Glendale. I am about to attend Hoover High School very soon. I am interested in computers and fascinated by the industry. I heard about Media for Youth Program on local television and think that this program is a wonderful idea. From what I heard on TV and seen in the studio facility, I think the...
Armin Zadikyan's time is running. If you'd like the DVD to continue, we'll go on to your time. Okay, Armin Zadikyan.
Dear councilmen, dear mayor, I'm Armin Zadikyan, executive board member of Hask. The CDBG founding, we have asked for city of Glendale for Media for Youth program is a fraction of our overall activities. Today, Hask has operated very successfully with the assistance of our members and our supporters. I lament that to some, there is the mistaken impression that Hask is new and known, unknown to the community, and thus result, it does not merit any consideration from the city, and more importantly, they have not even bothered to be present even once prior to the denial of our application for CDBG in our facility to see for themselves and to better appraise our capabilities. Otherwise, our office doors always have been open for everybody. Thanks God that our honorable Mayor Najarian and within council member Quintero have found our work to be worthy of acceptable and have graciously come to our welcoming facility and have done so not hand-handedly, but have come to present to us mayor's commendation. They are not greedy and have not invited rewards of others' work, their work, but believe that is, would be more justifiable to have the city's resources for more equitable distributed among those who perform good deeds for the community. Otherwise, it creates the impression that a segment of the community received rather large funds from the city for playing basketball, but other segments are denied these very precious funds in order to perform very important functions within, within the community.
Thank you, Mr. Zadikyan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arnold, excuse me, Arnold Milner, followed by Joe Mandoki.
Good afternoon, members of the diocese, members of the audience. My name is Arnold Milner, I'm the chairperson of the Clean and Beautiful Committee for Glendale. I'm here to talk about questing that funding be put back on the board to fund anti-graffiti. Although you are probably aware of graffiti and its problems, I would like to address two areas. First area would be that if the city is not in the position to clean up graffiti as soon or clean it up at all, if they don't have the facilities at the time, then that would mean the private property owners' businesses would have to clean up the graffiti. Problem with that is that there are individuals that do not take an interest in the neighborhood, do not have the facilities to clean up the graffiti, and what we would be looking at is not just what we would think in terms of somebody's wall, but what happens about signposts, telephone posts, telephone boxes, curbs, and things of this area? Who cleans it up? We take in several incidents where they're doing with sidewalks and cement, sandblasting. Private owner, private resident does not have that type of equipment. Also, because of the different types of materials that are used for anti-graffiti, including stick-on advertisements that you probably would notice on telephone posts, traffic signals and other areas, who cleans that off? It requires a certain amount of energy, ladders, and other equipment that the person on the street is not familiar with or has the equipment to handle. Other thing is, I happen to live in the southern part of Glendale. Okay.
Thank you, Mr....
Thank you.
Mr. Mandoki, followed by Karen Compton.
My name is Joe Mandoki, and I'm a past chairman of the Glendale Clean and Beautiful Committee. I've been fighting the graffiti program for, or fighting graffiti for almost 30 years, and the reason Glendale is different than any other city around is because of our graffiti program and the fact that we're able to, with city funds, to help get that eradicated in a day or less in most cases. Extending it by one day doesn't mean you just have one more day's worth of graffiti, it means that the guy who sees that graffiti on there, the person who sees it is going to tag it again and tag it again. And I, I, I think this whole process of these funds, I, I think the committee, their recommendations are from the heart, and then I think Mr. Milano earlier said that these funds should come from someplace else besides just relying on the government. The city from redevelopment funds or someplace, we should fund these programs. I've been on the other side of different committees, I've been on different groups in the city, and we get denied because, you know, for a couple of thousand dollars, you go through this whole process and it frustrates everybody. And I'm telling you though, that if you remove, you know, I don't care where the funding comes for the graffiti program, but it better come from someplace, because at the end of the day, when those people call up, why is our city going to, to the pot? It's going to be because of the City Council. Instead of when we call that 547-4800 number to complain about graffiti, we're going to give them the, I'm going to give, when I see people on the street, I say, why is graffiti going down, down the road and the city going to pot? It's going to be, it's called the people of the City Council who deny us these funds. Gentlemen, this may or may not be the place to fund this program, but you better find it someplace, or our city is not going to be the Jewel City it was and has been for 30 years, so. And, and this is not like it, you can just stop it for a while and it's not going to get bad right away, it's going to get bad right away, and to undo that damage you do by not funding this program, the keeping it, you know, the efforts we're doing now, we have thousands of people who volunteer, hundreds of people in their communities who adopted blocks and all these kind of things to make our city better. And if you give up on us by letting graffiti go to hell, it's going to be terrible. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
Start by, let me ask you again, what's the total amount of money we put in the graffiti program? Not just CDBG.
The total budget for the anti-graffiti program is $165,000.
$165?
This is roughly, this is roughly 21, about a fifth of it.
We just alluded to that we're eliminating the graffiti program if we don't put this 20-some thou, 30,000.
It's two staff people, so if this amount of money is not funded somewhere, it will probably involve reducing the staffing, which is why probably Mr. Engel said the time for the removal of graffiti will be extended. The money all go, it pretty much goes to staff.
We are putting money in, we're not eliminating it totally.
Correct.
Thank you. Karen Compton, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council and members of the agency, my name is Karen Compton, and I've been a member, a previous member of the CDBG Advisory... Compton and I've been a member, a previous member of the CDBG advisory committee in 2005 and appreciate the deliberations that you have to undertake this afternoon to consider funding reductions for all of the programs. My reason for being here this afternoon is because I have looked at the recommendations and feel that they do not equitably reflect equitable reduction across the board for all programs. In many cases, some programs have been increased while others have been asked to bear the brunt of reduced funding while still continuing to service a broad spectrum of the community regardless of their housing situation, their ability to pay or inability to pay, or their ethnicity or culture. The city services nearly a quarter of a million people. Almost a third of them has been pointed out actually fall below the poverty line and many of them are children. Their parents are not well-connected with funders or donors and indeed rely on the city for a variety of needs, including homework, help, after-school programs, enrichment programs, and as some of you have already heard, other extracurricular activities. Many of those parents and families rely on New Horizons Family Center as well as other programs that are here this afternoon requesting funding, who have demonstrated fiscal responsibility with taxpayer funds and deliver quality programs to meet the city's needs. I am actually here only to ask you to consider an equitable solution for the reduction of funds for all programs. I understand that you have a limited amount of money that's available to you and that you consider those programs who have indeed served your community well and have demonstrated financial responsibility. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Dr. Edward Kudavardian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond and I am representing the thirty-nine percent density south of the 134. How many people would that be? About eighty thousand, right? All right. And I want to thank the city for the improvements that have been made in the quality of life in southern Glendale, particularly Adam Square via the upscale renovation of Adam Square, the mini park, and many other wonderful things. This deterioration that was caused in the first place was caused by the impact of zoning, which allowed multiple housing in the 1970s and 80s to the degree a horrendous, thirty-nine percent of the city lives in that area, right? All right. The school, for instance, Mann, which was built for six hundred children, which my daughter attended in, back in 1960, ended up with thirteen hundred children, all due to this overbuilding. You know, but look out. What the thing that bothers me is the fact that the Pacific Park pool was taken out and the park, the courts, the tennis courts, the preschool, and the beautiful Pacific Park was cemented over without any thought as to what the results would be. And now the money for the Pacific Pool, or for the pool, $1.2 million, reduced to $897 from what the city council approved, down to $897. But yet, here we have a facility that is a conversion of a warehouse outside of Glendale for a cultural athletic facility at the amount of $345,000. Why is the money being taken from the pool being put down here when it should be our pool in our area? Thank you very much. And Mr. Mayor, you did promise that you would get us a pool when you were running for-
For Canada.
Right. Remember? Do you remember?
I remember. Dr. Edward Kudavardian, and followed by Murad Topalyan.
Good afternoon, city council and Glendale Housing Authority members. First, I would like to appreciate the CDBG advisory committee that they recommended us. Of course, we are getting half of what we were asking, but for first time, we are happy we can get that. Our organization is a social service organization and we, from first day, our commitment is to make a difference in youth and families. And this program that we are presenting is about youth. And I think the best way today, instead of talking about all the program, to represent twelve of our participants, youth participants, and they can share their experience of what they got from the program.
And, Dr. You're with ARC Family Services?
Yes, ARC Family Center.
ARC Family Center.
Dear city council members, good afternoon. My name is Yuna Vartimanyan and I'm seventeen years old and I'm a senior at Hoover High. I am currently an active member, an active, excuse me, volunteer with ARC Family Center and I have been with them for the past two years. I was fortunate enough to be sponsored by Edward Kudavardian and Melina Sardar to attend the Create Freedom and Awareness Program for Youth. Knowledge that I took from this program, honestly, it has enabled me to have a better relationship with my parents with whom I did not have a relationship before participating in this program and has also supported me in my personal growth. So, to have, to be given this grant would allow us to, our organization, excuse me, to be able to support other youth like me, to have that opportunity to grow and to see what else is out there in the world. So, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council members and housing authority members.
Do you have a card, Ms. that you've submitted?
Well, yeah. I just want to say that I turned in a separate card, so can you-
What's your name?
Vardimikitarion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, my name is Vardimikitarion and two years ago, I participated in ARC Family Center. And ever since, I have been an active volunteer and, I've been an active volunteer. And I learned, I learned, I learned like a lot of things, major things that I've learned from this program was how to be committed, how to be responsible, and leadership. And after that, I decided to become an assistant for this program until today. And my goal in this program is to, is to pass on the things that I have learned to another youth. And, and I know that every youth should go through this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Murad Topalyan, followed by Armand Gorgorian, Mr. Quintaro.
Now, let me just break in a moment and say that for people out in the, well, not people out in the audience, maybe people watching on television, watching the rerun, sometimes they may wonder, well, gee, do these programs work? Do they not work? You're taking taxpayer money, et cetera. Dr. Kudavarian came to my office many, many years ago and we both had hair. It was black. And he was basically a refugee from Armenia and he came into what was then called a CETA training program. And so, he started with absolutely zero when he got off that plane. And we've been friends ever since. I guess I'm prejudiced in terms of this program, but anyway, we've been friends ever since. And he worked his way through the educational system and for many years now, he's headed this organization. So, I guess the bottom line is that these programs do work because it certainly transformed his life and now he's helping to transform others here in Glendale. So, we're good friends and I'm very proud of everything that he does.
Thank you. Mr. Topalyan.
Hi, my name is Murad Topalyan. I'm Executive Director of the Armenian Cultural Foundation, members of council and mayor. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again. We'd like to thank you for your previous funding of our youth community center on Chestnut Avenue in Glendale. Comments have been made today about the southern portion of the city and the problems with social programs and the neglect that that area of the city has. We are building a youth community center right in one of the most impoverished areas of the city in South Glendale. In that youth community center, we will have job training programs for youth, anti-drug programs, anti-gang programs, family counseling, youth counseling, women's programs, seniors programs, sports and recreation. Overall, we're trying to attack the problem that the community has, in some ways, pushed under a rug, that in the southern part of the city, we have high crime. We have gangs. We have serious problems. They need to be addressed. We're putting our money and our efforts where our mouth is. We're confident and pleased that the city has also deemed the program, the youth center, the youth community center, a good project and worthy of your support. I would be remiss not to say thank you to your department that has helped us, your staff. Jess Duran and his staff have been very helpful in preparing, helping us prepare how to ask for the money, write the proposals, and come before in a professional way. Your CDBG committee, though they were very hard on us, it was hard on us in a professional, friendly way where we could disagree and communicate and get something done. It's an example for all the different committees that we have in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Armand Gorgorian, followed by Katrina Bautista.
Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the housing authority staff. My name is Armand Gorgorian and I represent Home and Admin, Glendale Chapter, and its 2,400 youth members. On their behalf, I would like to thank the CDBG Commission for their vision and approval of the three very worthy programs capital improvement projects. Supporting our project, which is one of those three, will allow us to increase the number of youth that we serve from five hundred plus to eight hundred per day. That means eight hundred kids off the streets and its negative influences. When we are talking about South Glendale, eighty percent of our membership is from South Glendale, 91204 and 91205. During past twelve-plus, twenty-plus years, we have been lucky to have the support of city, state government, and the community for our youth programs. I believe we've done something right for that period of time that we have the support of those three bodies. We also know our responsibility in the community and for that purpose, we not only serve the youth, but we also instill in them sense of good citizenship and volunteerism. Playing sports is not our goal, but the sport is the means for us to bring the kids to our activities, make them better volunteers, and make them better citizens. We're not going to make any Magic Johnsons or Kobe Bryans in our programs. We have participated in graffiti removal, cancer walk, and have cooperated with other civic organizations in the city of Glendale. Each year, we are one of the sponsors of the Winter Fest at Brand Park. And as of two years ago, we have been organizing Glendale Friendship Games to promote diversity in sports and in the community. In conclusion, I respectfully request for the council to approve the CDBG Commission's recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Katrina Bautista, followed by Karine Gorgorian.
Good afternoon. My name is Katrina Bautista and I've had the opportunity to work for the Glendale Youth Alliance since October 2006. In my time with the program, I've learned what it's like to be in the working world. So, you get out eight o'clock every morning, go to work, you know, be on time, dress appropriately, and to better communicate with my fellow coworkers, which helps us work better as a team. I think this program is great because kids can learn what I've learned and, but at a younger age, which would help them in the future. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karine Gorgorian, followed by Daisy Ruiz.
Good afternoon. My name's Karina Gorgorian. I'm the program supervisor for the Glendale Youth Alliance. First of all, I want to start off by thanking you for your ongoing support of the Glendale Youth Alliance. GYA has successfully executed twelve CDBG grants since 1996. It was established in 1993 and served about thirty youth per year. Currently, we have six programs that serve over four hundred youth from the ages of fourteen to twenty-four. We're very involved with the community and collaborate well with a lot of the organizations that are here today as well. This past year, we've been able to award seventeen scholarships to graduating seniors and fifteen of our participants were able to obtain permanent employment within the different departments with the city of Glendale. Most importantly, it offers a lot of the youth hands-on, real-world experience and allows them to get into the workforce and grow within their positions. In addition to serving the youth, GYA has great benefits for the community. Our programs contribute and support the fire prevention efforts of the city of Glendale as well as get the youth off the streets and summer employment as well as after-school programs. With high school dropout rates reaching thirty to fifty percent nationwide, it's very important to engage our youth in positive activity and the time to invest is now. And we hope you can support us in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Daisy Ruiz, followed by Eric Holgwin.
Hi, my name is Daisy Ruiz and I am from the Glendale Youth Alliance. And in this program, I have gained much work experience. I started when I was fourteen with no work experience and not knowing what I would, the challenges that would come. Over the years, I have learned much about teamwork and what it takes to be a great employee. I have gained work experience. This program has helped me a lot and I hope it continues to help other youth to come. Thank you for your help.
Thank you very much. Eric Holgwin, followed by Ruben, Ruby.
Good afternoon, fellow council members. My name is Eric Holgwin. I am a team supervisor at the Glendale Youth Alliance. It is my honor to be speaking on behalf of the GYA today. As you all should know, we are a nonprofit organization that provides work for many of the Glendale area youth. Most of what we do consists of clearing dry hillside brush on both city-owned and privately-owned properties. The Glendale Youth Alliance is a fantastic program that helps young people with job placement in our fire prevention program, in local businesses, as well as in many of the city departments such as Public Works, Integrated Waste, and Parks and Recreation. Keeping young people occupied means that they are kept away from the streets and are less likely to commit crimes like vandalism and graffiti. I began working for the program in March of 2005. I started out as a youth worker and am currently a team supervisor. In the last three years, I have learned innumerable lessons on customer service, teamwork, courteousness, professional conduct, and responsibility. The program has assisted in shaping me into a better employee and a better person. The GYA has helped me set both educational and career goals. Many of my supportive colleagues have served as an encouragement to pursue my post-secondary education and I'm thankful for them. I have even received a college scholarship from the GYA. My ultimate objectives are to further my education and work experience in order to find a suitable career in the city of Glendale. It is my personal assurance that the Glendale Youth Alliance is an enormous value in the investment of the city's future workforce. I hope you will all choose to further endorse our program and I thank you for your time. Bid you farewell and a good afternoon.
Thank you. Ruben Ruby, followed by Carlos.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity, city council and Mr. Mayor. I'm the Board of Directors for New Horizons Family Center. I've also been a citizen of Glendale since I was three years old, 1974, till now. Served our country in the Navy for ten years and still living here. I wanted to touch on a couple of key points with in regards to the CDBG funds and their recommendation. First, I realize I at one time was also a commissioner and it's tasking to go through everything that they have to go through. But when recommendations are made, there should be an attempt at trying to make cuts uniformly. Everyone all across the board should be, should know what they're getting cut on. In regards to our organization, according to what they were saying, our programs, we provide the most efficient services with the high quality of service, the most diverse, and we serve the most diversified groups, both culturally and economically, in the city of Glendale, primarily in South Glendale. We serve over two hundred children in the city. With these proposed cuts to our particular request, we would have to, I believe, drop down to fifty kids, which that's a huge cut. Things are tough also on the Board of Directors. We've already been trying to do whatever we can to serve the community at maximize our dollars, basically is what I was trying to say. Also, going back to that- Also going back to that same CDBG commission, this happens to be the third year in a row that the recommendations for our services to be cut are based on our great work, on the fact that we do help all our kids, and they say that, well, they can do it, they can take care of it themselves. Well, that's not always the facts, you know? We try to do the best of what we can, and I find it hard to believe that the taxpayers of this community believe that their tax dollars should be penalizing the organization that maximizes their dollars, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
You have a question. With that cut, that means how many students would not, or how many kids would not be served? Did you say?
I believe we drop about 150 children out of that program. We currently serve 200.
So you would go down to 150?
Or are we losing 50? I'd actually defer to the executive director who's going to speak.
Whenever that next person...
It's either we lose 50 or we lose 150. I'm not quite sure of the exact number, but it's a substantial cut.
Thank you. Carlos Laboy, followed by Juan Guillen.
Good afternoon, members of this council. I promise to take less than two minutes. My name is Carlos Laboy, and I am a member of the New Horizon Family Center here in Glendale. The reason I'm before you is to ask this council to reinstate the CDBG funding to our organization. Now, this is for the after-school program, so this is my request to you people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Juan Guillen, followed by Esther Garcia.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for listening to me. I'm here because I'm speaking for 200 children that can't speak for themselves. I'm here for the 15 children that aren't recognized by the council that the center still funds. I'm here to recognize a portion of the city that is ignored and neglected, and I'm here to speak for a center that does more than less and is misunderstood as being funded with an abundance of wealth. I'm here, I'm here for them, I'm here for the children, I'm here for New Horizons, and I ask you to please reinstate their funding. They're an amazing program that does amazing things for children, and we're going to have more than graffiti issues if a third of those kids are thrown out on the streets and have nowhere to go after school. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Garcia, followed by Josefina Gutierrez.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Esther Garcia, and my son attends New Horizon program, and the reason I'm here is because I think New Horizon is a great program. I'm a single mom, I'm homeless, so if it wasn't for New Horizons, it would be very hard for me to do what I'm doing now that is going to school and working. Also, as a survivor of domestic violence, for me, the fact of trusting someone to stay with my son is very hard, and New Horizon has provided me that secures that my son is fine. It's a great program. I've been seeing my son has been improved a lot in his behavior in school, and it's a great, great program. It's very safe, and for me, safety, because my background is important. So that's why I'm asking you to consider the fund for New Horizon, because I know it's not just helping my son, but a lot of people that is in my same situation, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Josefina Gutierrez, followed by Carlos Reyes.
She needs a translator.
Okay. Our policy is to extend your time for the translator, so we'll have four minutes with the translation.
My name is Josefina Gutierrez, and I'm a mother, a daughter, and it's very important that they don't cut the funding for this program because they help me to collect my daughter from school, and she can be there after I finish school, and it's very important for me to continue with the help for this program. Gracias.
My name is Josefina Gutierrez. She's a single mother with a child at New Horizons Family Center. She goes to school and she works, so it's very important for her to have New Horizons collect her child at school and then take her to the center and allow her to do her work and to go to college. She needs the services, and so do many others. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Carlos Reyes.
My name is Carlos Reyes. I've been in this community since about 1980, working in this community in one function or another. Every day, I pick up kids from school, and I get to nurture them in the happiest moment of their day, their leaving school. Many of them, if they didn't come to our center, would be in trouble within a half hour of the time they leave the center. I've had teachers and principals tell us that we get the worst child at their school, the worst discipline, the worst behaved. Sometimes I've had teachers tell me, my God, you have the worst child at this school, and you have the worst child here, and I heard you had the one over there, too. We help them with their homework, we pick them up from school, we even sit with them when they're crying because they just got a letter from Roosevelt because they're not going to be able to get into their avid program. Sometimes we're closer to them than their own parents. We listen to them, we also fall in love with them. We take care of them as if they were ours. Some of you have known me and my work for over 20 years. This is what we're about, this is what we do. We are New Horizons. Thank you.
Mr. Quintero. With the funding cut from $45,000 to $30,000, how many youth would not be served in your estimation?
I don't have the answer for that question. My estimation would be about 50.
50? So roughly?
Roughly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Dr. Maria Rochard. Followed by Michael Allen.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and Housing Authority. You have to bear, because my voice is not the best, maybe some of you are glad that my voice is not at its best. I will answer that question. It will be roughly 50, but it could be more. Right now, CDBG funds one teacher and half part-time driver. So with that, then we would have to go back to the budget, cut one teacher, back to part-time, and the driver. So it would equal around 50 or more. So that's what it would equal to, because that's what CDBG funds. With that, I have to say you have a very difficult decision to make. Funding is tight for all of you, and I encourage you to give funds to those organizations that you believe will be the most effective job in serving the underserved communities. It is essential to maximize the available funds, and I encourage the council to reinstate the $45,000 to New Horizons Family Center. I believe that we are very effective in serving the underserved community, and we are the most cost-effective to the city per child, per hour. Even Mr. Marion put it in his report. Got penalized for doing a good job. Got penalized because we can handle it. You don't know if we can handle it or not. You're not there sitting every day, or what our board members had to go through, we just closed the Child Development Center and had to reschedule all those kids and try to fit them into New Horizons from 3:00 to 5:00 and work with licensing in your fire department, not to lose those families. I have a waiting list that goes on. In the arena of the vegetarian, times are hard, and I understand you have to cut, I understand new programs have to come in. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with the cut. I have a problem the way it was done. I have copies, so if anybody wants copies, I have copies of what one committee member said, and that we got straight, straight fives across the board.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Weaver? Ms. Rochard, you know how rumors go around, and I hate rumors, so would you please correct this rumor before it goes any further? It's been said that if you don't get the money, Carlos Reyes will be fired. Would you?
Carlos Reyes is the one funded by CDBG.
He doesn't get the additional money.
I have to see where it's going to come from, Mr. Weaver. You understand that, that's why he's here. He knows that, that it's his salary and one driver.
Rumors going around, he'll be fired.
He's the one that is funded by CDBG. He knows that.
Okay, shaking said.
It's not a rumor, it's stated, and we have to provide this, Madeline Blake and her staff with who is under CDBG.
So if you lose 50 out of, what, 150 or 200, you'll be fired.
Did I say that? I said that we have to look at the budget, but he's the one under CDBG.
I want to clear up the rumor, because you don't need that going around.
You know, I can't say a rumor, the Board of Directors makes that decision. I know that you and I and everybody in this room loves Carlos, and he's served over thousands of children. The thing is, he is under CDBG, so you want me to now start looking for other miracles? And that's maybe what I have to do.
I just don't like that kind of rumor going around.
It's not a rumor. He is under CDBG. It's by your, in your papers.
Well, you're cutting 50 out of 200.
At least.
At least, so for the 50, he go, he may go.
He knows that.
Okay. Mr. Quintero. One of the speakers stated that she was actually homeless. You all, some of these kids and these families, you actually work with homeless families?
Yes, we are the after-school program and daycare program for the homeless for the city of Glendale. We currently have a little pot of money, which is $20,000 a year, and everyone knows in this room that we serve more than that, triple that. So we are the providers to the city for the homeless children, for daycare and after-school programs.
And those families come from our homeless shelter?
Yes, they come from our homeless shelter. We pick them up after school, and they stay with us till 8:00 P.M. Thank you.
Michael Allen, followed by Guyana Devudians.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'd like to start by thanking the City Council and actually the CDB Board for providing funding to New Horizons After School Program. It's true that we've heard many times, it's a tough decision where funding has to be provided, and those decisions have to be made by the Board and by you, finally, by you. It's been stated very well, and in some cases quite passionately by some, the need for the various monies to be provided and where they must go. In New Horizons, you do have an organization that has proven itself to be efficient and resilient, and which serves and serves well an underserved population. A third of its requested funding from $45,000 to $30,000 was cut. That impacts a great many children. There are 200 children served in the after-school program, and frankly, the center, if it's correct, will not be able to fully fund that program, and hence, we'll have to make cuts. Where those cuts eventually end up is something we will have to struggle with. We ask you to reconsider the amounts being provided. A third of a request like that means a great deal to a small organization like New Horizons. It was the largest cut that I've seen by percentage of any organization in the funding request schedule. I would ask that you consider not just the organization and its long reputation of good service, which the City Board itself recognized by providing its highest rating, but also consider the kids in South Glendale, those who are homeless, those who are home, as it were. Everybody needs something, and 200 kids have needed the after-school program. I ask you to apply yourself judiciously to this question. Thank you.
Thank you. Guyana Devudians, followed by Manuah Angili.
Good afternoon, City Council members. My name is Guyana Devudians. I'm the executive director of Club Jam. I know Club Jam's name was mentioned, it was the first program up on the board, and we have been recommended for $35,000 this year, which is a $15,000 increase, but what City Council may not remember is that two years ago, Club Jam was cut by about 50%. So for the last two years, we have gone from $38,000 or $34,000 down to $20,000. So for the past two years, we have been really struggling and have had to reduce our number of students from 100 students down to 60 students. So this $35,000 this year will just allow Club Jam to take a breather, to give us an opportunity again to raise the number of the students that we serve from the 50 and 60 back up to 100 and 120. Club Jam is the only program that is funded in the western side of Glendale, and we do, there is a great, great need for our program in that area, and we do have a great number of students on our waiting list who need our program desperately. And I want to thank the committee members, they were wonderful, they did visit our program. Not only did they visit our program, but they spent time with my students, they asked them what they do there, they asked them what they like about the program, they went through all the classrooms, and I understand it's a difficult task, and I'm asking you to please support the recommendation that was made for Club Jam this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian.
I have a question. Your per-person cost is chosen here, it's about $493. Is that an accurate number? Is that based on receiving your $35,000, or how did you work that?
I'm not sure what you're looking at or how that was divided up per person, but right now, we have 60 students that we will be serving within the year, and we had to cut that. When we were getting $30,000 to $35,000, we were serving between 100 and 120 students.
This is what I have, and I don't know if you have seen this.
No, I haven't.
It says, it says, "After-school program, project sponsor, Club Jam. Your total budget is $96,665, and person served is 100." Am I correct? Am I reading this chart correctly?
Yes, Councilman Yusefian, I would like to explain, the chart that you have is a chart that was prepared by one of the committee members as his personal guide for deliberations during the funding recommendation.
But this is not a staff-created chart?
It's not a staff report. It's one committee member's own tool that he brought to the meeting, that he shared with his colleagues, and then they chose whether to use portions of his personal analysis and when not to. So that's not, that's not based on information that was provided, for example, from staff or the service provider.
I thought this was a chart created by staff. Sorry, never mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuah Angili, followed by Karina Arabolaza.
Good afternoon. My name is Manuah Angili, and I've been a GY worker for the past year. The GY program has taught me so much, things that I would have never achieved if it wasn't for this program. It really opened, honestly, opened up a new road for me towards achievements and to have a better vision of the economy and what life really is about. It taught me how to be a great employee and taught me the skills it takes to become an employer and actually be in charge. This program actually includes a very good program with, it comes along with the ROP class, which teaches you how to prepare for college and how to do papers, such as resumes and such papers that you would need in the future if you were to be in charge of a program. And I believe this program should be something that people should be looking towards for their kids, because it can help them in many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Karina Arabolaza.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Karina Arabolaza. I'm with the Housing Rights Center. We are the organization that provides fair housing services for the city of Glendale, and I want to thank your past support of our fair housing program and would like to request your support to continue our fair housing program. For the, well, the Housing Rights Center, we provide free services, and our mission is to ensure equality in housing. We provide housing discrimination investigation, we enforce the fair housing laws, we conduct a fair housing outreach and education programs, collaborating with local community organizations... organizations, uh, informing, uh, residents and community members of their, uh, rights and responsibilities. We also provide free landlord-tenant counseling through our toll-free number. Uh, for the fiscal year, uh, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, which is still in progress, uh, as of, uh, March thirty-first, we've serviced over a thousand, uh, residents of the city of Glendale. Seventy percent of those that we assisted, uh, were low to extremely low income, and, um, of the discrimination complaints that we've received, uh, over fifty percent of those were complaints based on, uh, disability discrimination, uh, and the other two categories, discrimination towards families with children and discrimination based on race and national origin. Of the, uh, residents that we assisted for landlord-tenant issues, uh, the top three issues, uh, that folks needed assistance with was regarding rent increases, such standard conditions, and eviction issues. Um, I also want to highlight that this year is the fortieth anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, um, and I want to extend an invitation to all of you to attend our ninth annual Housing Rights Summit where we will commemorate the fortieth anniversary of Fair Housing Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Miller, followed by Kathy Piametti.
Hi, I'm Elaine Miller, and I'm here in support of the ARC Family Centers, um, Creating Freedom and Awareness seminars. As we've already heard, these, um, are self-awareness and personal growth seminars for the youth of Glendale. Last summer, I participated as an instructor in the Rosie Goes to Wall Street camp, which is, um, a three-week program for underprivileged teen girls in Glendale. ARC Family Center also participated in this program by conducting the Creating Freedom and Awareness seminars for the girls. What I consistently heard from the girls throughout the course was how much they loved these pro, these seminars. I was really impressed by how much enthusiasm the girls had when they were speaking about the seminars and how these seminars helped them to shift their views of themselves, their world around them, and their place in the world. In fact, I was so inspired that I actually signed up for the adult version of the Creating Freedom and Awareness seminars, and I can say from personal experience that these seminars truly are life-changing and transformational. So I highly recommend, um, that ARC Family Center continue to receive the funding to bring this important program to the youth of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Piametti, followed by Ara Arzumanian.
Good afternoon, City Council and Housing Authority. My name is Kathy Piametti, and I appreciate all of your time. I am here in support of ARC Family Center and Creating Freedom and Awareness, um, seminar. As an educator, I am here to endorse ARC Family Center and its commitment to our youth. I saw the seminar in action during Rosie Goes to Wall Street, um, which is a camp put on by the Commission on the Status of Women. The program transforms lives, lives, and I personally have seen the seminars transform lives, lives. I know that they have applied for the CDBG grant and funding and have been recommended to receive the funding, and I truly hope that you consider, um, ARC Family Center for this funding. It's a great program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ara Arzumanian, followed by Gary Cornell.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'm also here to speak in support of ARC Family Center. My name's Ara Arzumanian, and I'm the Director of Generation Next Mentorship Program, and, uh, I'm also the Vice Chair of the Glendale Unified School District's Healthy Start Collaborative. Um, the Create Freedom and Awareness seminars that they offer at ARC Family Center really are amazing seminars. They're really excellent, high-quality programs. Over the last seven years, I've been working with youth in Glendale, and a lot of programs you create relationships with, and some of those relationships last years because you see the real quality that is provided to your kids from your program that you refer. And ARC Family Center is definitely one of those programs, and I'm gonna be guilty of also speaking in favor of, uh, Glendale Youth Alliance as well, because they're also one of those programs too. So, um, uh, both of these programs are amazing programs that really make a difference in kids' lives, and, uh, uh, ARC has really helped make serious changes for some of the kids that I've referred to them, and, uh, they're not a program that'll just take on a kid just to get the numbers and stats. Sometimes they'll call me and say, "You know what? This kid isn't ready. You need to work with them a little more and get them to a point where they can take this information in." And that's a respectable thing that you don't often see. So, uh, I just wanted to say, I hope that you, uh, do honor the decision of the CDBG Advisory Committee and do fund them. And as a side note, uh, I'd like to say, as someone who has worked with dozens and dozens of kids who do graffiti, uh, in my youth programs, all types of youth programs are graffiti prevention. Although graffiti removal is very important, graffiti prevention is just as important than it's coming from someone who's about to go to Home Depot to buy a bucket of paint because there's just been graffiti on the back of my house, uh, over the weekend, so I gotta paint that over. So graffiti prevention. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gary Cornell, followed by Sam Engel.
Uh, Mayor, members of the City Council, Housing Development, Madeline Blake. Uh, I'm speaking, I'm Gary Cornell, I'm speaking as an individual. Uh, it is most difficult for me to sit back here, uh, when a quality-of-life item is, is being deleted, and it hits me hard because I used to live in that area, and, uh, on Tyler Street, eleven oh three. I've seen it. I've been away for about twelve years. To be sure I haven't lost my touch, I went with one of, uh, the Housing Development, I mean, the, uh, uh, Sam's units, Neighborhood Services to be out, his name was Javier, was there on February twenty-eighth. I wanted to see this firsthand, uh, and I was out there for half a day. And what I was touched by, when we were there in South Glendale, four residents came up, talked to Javier, one to me, "Thank you for what you're doing. We do care. Uh, we couldn't do it by ourselves. We thank the city for your efforts." And the Neighborhood Services is doing a fantastic job. It's so easy to put it on, two or three hours to take it off, and it's just not pain anymore. You have to have the latest technology in order to be able to do it. Unless the city manager can pull a hat-trick and get funds elsewhere, although I see from HUD, this item is allowed for graffiti removal, I would like to ask you, until the city manager can do this and get funds for this program, if it's not coming from HUD, to fund this at last year's level, at thirty-five thousand, so this continues till we can come up with something. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Engel.
Member of the Housing Authority, members of the City Council, I want to thank you for listening to everybody and certainly hear all the wonderful things that are going on in the community. It's fun to hear some of the partners that we have in Neighborhood Services, in particular the Housing Rights Center, talk about some of the cases they deal with, and they're certainly the ones that they've had referred from us. The city's graffiti removal and prevention program has been around since the early nineteen-eighties. It's been remarkably effective in keeping our city pretty much graffiti-free. I want to state that it's a program that benefits all residents of our community, not just one particular group or another, and it's a partnership between our city government and our residents who know that their quality of life is adversely affected by the blight of graffiti. But it's one of those kind of services that's like sewers or water, electricity, don't think about, uh, much about it until it's not there or it's not working really well. We're told that graffiti conveys a message, that it's a means of communication, and we know that that's true in Neighborhood Services, because graffiti in a neighborhood tells the world that nobody cares about that neighborhood, and that's certainly not true in Glendale, as we've heard from, uh, Gary and some other people who talked about what residents say, but it's also a message that we cannot afford to send out about our city. Many people don't know that in nineteen ninety-six, we were able to cut our graffiti removal staff back by one person, because we had reduced by so much the amount of graffiti that we were removing each month that we didn't need one person. We were ma, able to make available the funds that paid for that one person to provide for some of these other programs and services that you're hearing about today. Sadly, times have changed, and we are falling behind a bit in our battle against graffiti. We're requesting today that our level of CDBG funding be restored, either through the CDBG funds themselves or other ways that the council might come up with. During the upcoming city budget process, we're a little concerned about our ability city-wide to deal with graffiti, and we have a service-level request that we're gonna call to your attention dealing with the issue of graffiti throughout the entire city. I just would like to say that, um, we're meeting our performance standards, and I hope you'll be able to consider our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Okay, you heard this comments at the beginning. How do you measure delay? Say it slipped from three to five days or something. Starbuck was wondering, gee, how do you calculate the impact of not...
The delay is when the time we get the, the complaint until the time we're able to remove it. That would be the timeframe that we establish.
And it's, and it's gonna slip if we make this cut, and we don't fund it out of general fund, right?
The amount of time that will take to, to take us from the time we get a complaint till the time we remove it, we remove it, will go up. Yes.
Why?
Because there are fewer people to do this, and...
So you, you will lay off people.
We will lay off people. And there's other thing I want to state, that one of the things that came up is that, that there's all this general fund money in the graffiti removal budget. There is not. It's paid for out of the transit budget, and it's paid for out of the electric fund. There is no general fund money in the graffiti budget. CDBG, transit, and electric. And it's important that people understand that.
And the total money?
What? By one sixty-five, twenty thousand of that is raised by your advisory committee, the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale. They pay for all of the supplies, uh, for this particular program.
And how many people are in the program to remove graffiti?
Two, for a community of thirty-three square miles.
And if you don't get this money put back in, one of those two...
We will lay one of them off.
So there'll be one serving the entire city?
Yes. And half of that person is dedicated to doing bus stops, so essentially you'll have half a person.
Half a person for the entire city if you lose this portion of the total amount.
Right.
Thank you. Have I missed anyone's card before we go to another question? I think I have all the cards and called everyone's name. Mr. Yusefian.
Uh, you said total is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
A hundred and sixty-five.
Hundred and sixty-five. How much of that is the, uh, salaries?
Uh, one twenty-two.
One twenty-two. So, uh, half of that is sixty?
One, we have one maintenance worker and one program specialist, one makes, without talking about their salaries, one makes about sixty-five, one makes about fifty-five thousand, benefits included.
Okay. Uh, so in reality, cutting thirty-five thousand doesn't eliminate one person. It actually eliminates a half a person.
But, well...
As far as, I mean, you, I know you don't have a half a person, but hour-wise, that's what you will end up, probably.
That would be correct.
Second question. In the past, the Board of Realtors used to raise funds to help the graffiti removal. I remember this, before I was even in the council, they used to do that. Has the Board of Realtor, when was the last time Board of Realtors has given us money for that purpose?
Uh, Mr. Yusefian, members of the Housing Authority, my recollection is it's two thousand and four. Um, they, their sponsorship in the early nineties ranged between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, my recollection in two thousand and four, I think we got, uh, two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Their sponsor, their, their money goes to other places in the community as well.
Because they used to have, uh, little, uh...
We had this street dance.
Street dance, yes.
Hold on, Mr. Mandoki. Hold on. Mr. Mandoki, you can't address from the council, from the, can't address council from the audience.
Yeah, I'd like to have that answered, if Mr. Mandoki can answer that, because...
So we used to have the, the street dance, I think we made it fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, and that was strictly to the, and a graffiti program. Uh, when you started, the street scene, that put us out of business, and so the Realtors stopped doing that, because we, you, you, we charged people five or ten dollars to come in, and you charged people zero for the street dance, so we couldn't compete with that, so we eliminated that program.
Oh, you mean Cruze Night?
Cruze Night.
Yes.
No, no. You mean when we did the Cruze Night, it kind of put the street dance out?
Yeah, you were doing it for free, and we...
Okay.
...try to find people.
Got it. Okay. Um, okay. That, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, we've heard all the speakers. I have a prior commitment. I would think it best if we made a motion to continue this, to deliberate and absorb some of the comments that were made by the audience, uh, until a time certain being next week.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say one thing before we leave, because it was touched on here today. Um, that is, um, we've had our commissioners and different commissions come up and speak to us before, uh, on the road, saying, "I'm speaking for myself." You said there's nothing wrong with that. When you don't follow that process, it bothers me. Um, this Monday, uh, Gary Cornell sent me a long email, uh, stating he thought that the commission he served on, or the committee, did not do their job, stating that he felt some of his colleagues are not sophisticated in the budget process about funding, and I know Mr. Oliver has been on it fourteen years, something like that. I think he does know. And, Mr. Yusefian, the list you were referring to, uh, was one of the things was delivered to my office in a confidential envelope yesterday afternoon, and I guess I wasn't supposed to get this note that says, "Bob, enclosed per my comments made in email to you dated April fourth," that was Friday, "for April eighth agenda for joint meeting with the Department of Housing." I went over to Committee Housing and Develop and says, "What is this? What are these sheets that I got?" Well, the one sheet, word rated a good, bad, fair, stuff, that was staff. The other one, I was told, was done by one of the, um, committee, a sim, a spreadsheet, similarly that I've done for many years on trying to analyze complex issues. I was told that the committee as a whole says, "Thank you very much, but we're not gonna consider this." The email alluded to the fact that, uh, staff didn't give, um, the committee adequate time to review what one committee member had done on his own, for his own use. I think that is not proper, to send it in a personal envelope. The other four committee members did not know this, did not endorse it. It is wrong. When you go behind the back of your own committee, and, Mr. Cornell, I think you ought to submit your resignation for trying to do this behind the rest of your committee's back. It's wrong. You got up here and did the right way today. You got up and said what you wanted about New Horizons and the graffiti. Fine, just like everybody else, but don't do it behind your committee's back. It was not appreciated by them, and it's not appreciated by this council member. Now, if you want a motion to adjourn...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Gentlemen, wait, 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 wait. Wait. Um, just hold on a moment. Mr. Starbuck.
Uh, Mr. Draymond, before you take an action, I just want to make sure and confer with the city attorney for just a second. If they continue this to a time certain, can they do that without further public comment? Mr. Howard?
Yes, they can.
Okay. That'll be continued. I think we'd want to note that on the agenda, so everybody's clear, we won't, uh, we, now, you could certainly read open public comment, but, uh, if it were your preference, you could do it without further public comment.
That is the motion I'll be asking for. Now, Mr. Quintero. Yeah, I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
I didn't follow that. You talked about Gary Cornell, then you talked about another committee member, Amerian, who, uh, submitted that matrix, so I, I didn't, I couldn't follow it, quite frankly.
The email came on Monday, Monday morning.
From?
Gary Cornell, at three oh nine A.M. On Monday. When I came back from lunch on Monday, this confidential envelope was on my desk, and at twelve thirty-four P.M., it had the sheet that Mr. Amerian had done in it, that was alluded to in the email, that he had it and staff did not give adequate time for the entire committee to review it. The committee had made the decision not to review it. Thank you, Mr. Amerian, we're looking at it, but we're doing our own thing. And it's simply a spreadsheet, nothing different than I would have done myself. I could put in here a statement that my colleagues aren't sophisticated in the budgetary process is insulting to all four of the others.
Uh, Mr. Yusefian.
I just want to say, uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, that, uh, I did get, uh, Mr. Weaver's package... I just want to say, Mr. Mayor Protem, that I did get Mr. Weaver's packet, by the way.
Ah, you don't mind? Did you have the same belt on it?
So I guess we went alone.
I don't know. I'm not sure I got a packet. I have to check.
Did you get one?
I don't know. Mine was addressed to the news press, so I don't...
Hey, that pops ours.
And with that, Mr. Mayor Protem, I would like to make a motion to continue this matter with no further notice to April 15?
And without, I would like to...
Without further public comment?
Yeah.
Without further public comment.
Without public comment. That's my motion.
Second?
We have a second.
I'm treating that as for the City Council, because you do have a separate Housing Authority motion at 1C.
Yes.
I'm assuming there may be a similar motion for that.
Now, we'll need a similar motion for Housing Authority.
I'd love to call a motion.
Well, let's call a roll on that. Do we need to, Mr.?
You can do my unanimous consent, if all agree, all eyes.
Yes.
No opposition?
And for Housing.
I'll move that same motion for Housing.
Second.
For Housing?
All right.
Move to adjourn for Housing?
Hang on one second. We have, we have one other item. No, we don't. Okay.
Motion for Housing was made by?
Mr. Quintero, and seconded by Mr.?
No, I'm the Housing Chair.
Seconded by Mr. Yusefian.
So are we adjourned for Housing?
Yes, we are.
For Council?
So moved.
Thank you.